Pause for a few minutes and just bow your head before we start. I'm in. As I called the meeting to order, uh, and, and welcome everyone to the town forum. Let me just say a few words about Shannon Ingersoll. Shannon passed away this past, this last Friday after a long illness. She served on the, the Monterey Board of Adjustment from 2015 to 2018. She was also a member of the Bridge Studies Committee and a stalwart supporter of this community. She was just a wonderful, wonderful lady and we're going to miss Shannon. Commissioners, you have a copy of the public forum agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Mason Blake. Do I have a second? Have a second from Commissioner, who is that Kent Otto? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes carry. Floor is open for public comment.
That better? Okay. Yeah. I'm Martha Campbell. I live at 149 Maryland Place. I have questions related to the town's expenses for litigation related to the lodge proposed by the Mountain Retreat Association. I want to know the impact of ongoing costs that are being forced on town operations and on all of us who are property owners and taxpayers. I ask these questions with full understanding that because the town of Monterey is involved with ongoing litigation related to the decision of the town's volunteer board of adjustment on the matter of the lodge, commissioners and staff cannot comment on the litigation itself. From my experience as a former commissioner and observations as a resident through this lengthy process, I have full confidence in town attorney Susan Taylor Rash and others involved in this work on behalf of the town. My questions are as follows. One, what are total town expenses for this matter through 123122? Two, what are average currently monthly expenses of this litigation at this stage of the process? With attorney discovery, consultation and response to the brief now filed in Superior Court? Three, it is town practice to budget for attorney fees for services to review drafts of ordinances and other business matters. Where in the current budget does this extra money come from? Four, what decisions have staff and council made to provide for current and future costs of this lawsuit? Five, we're at the midpoint of the current fiscal year. How might this litigation affect budgeting and taxes for the next fiscal year? And six, how will such financial updates be shared with residents of the town of Monterey now and in the future? I have previously submitted these questions in order to give the mayor and the staff an opportunity to prepare responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. The, uh, the questions you've submitted are all public record, so I can speak to them. Uh, can't speak to anything else relating to the case though. Uh, total expenses for this matter through 123122. Attorney fees eighty seven thousand one hundred and thirty eight dollars and sixty three cents. Staff fees fourteen thousand seven hundred and ninety two dollars. For a total expenditure to date of a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and sixty three cents. Average current monthly expenses of the litigation litigation are a little less than five hundred dollars a month, but it's been going on for, for two years. A little over two years. So you, you know, the longer it goes and we're not having to spend anything, the less it's going to be per month. But it's still a whopping figure. You know, when you're talking about a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, that's, that's at least three police cars fully equipped. That's probably a new backhoe. That's probably a new snorkel truck, uh, to, to cut limbs and so forth. A lot of money that, uh, has gone out over, on that that could have been spent on other things. Uh, how has it affected our operating budget? The, uh, the town has worked very closely with the attorneys to try to predict future expenses and so forth, and have budgeted monies for that. The staff and council have provided, uh, current and future costs of the lawsuit. Uh, adopted a budget again, and then how do you litigate? How do you budget this in the future? You just have to look at what, talk to the attorneys and see how much further it's going to go and what it's going to cost. And that's the way we've had to budget it for the last couple of years. Along with our ongoing, our current legal expenses. When, when, and we have, we have some of those. Uh, how will financial updates related to this and other litigation be shared with residents of town of Monterey now and in the future? It's all public record. All you got to do is ask. Martha was kind enough to ask ahead of time. Cause if she'd asked it off the cuff, I could not have given her the hundred and one thousand dollars. Uh, as an answer, I, I would have had to say, well, we refer it to staff and let them come back, but they were able to, to work on it thanks to her giving us that. So that's, I think that pretty well answers it, Martha. That answers all of your questions and, uh, if you have any more, we'll be happy to, to answer them if we can. Who's next? One. Tom.
Tom, Chris, 98 Chris Road. Uh, first of all, Martha, thank you for asking those questions and thank you for answering those, Mayor. Um, so many of us are concerned about these things and it's wonderful to have. It's wonderful to have, uh, people in the community. And I can name a lot who take time to think through these things for the rest of us and ask questions. And I would like to, since we have more time, I wasn't going to ask this, but since we do have time, no one else seems to want to ask anything. I'd like to, I recently received, uh, like many of you, uh, email from Don Reed about the use of the space here. And as usual, Don is, uh, has good questions and he does it with a sense of humor, which is good. And, uh, I would like to, his opinion is very clear. And I'd like to hear the other side, uh, of the issue as well. What, uh, what are the plans or, uh, are the results from the survey in yet? What, what is the driving force behind using this space, uh, besides just wanting to be of service to the community? Thank you.
To answer your, your last question first, the driving force behind it is when this building was being built. That was, that was part of the thought process. That this room could be large enough to have other groups in here. Uh, the survey is not in yet. I don't know. Uh, Tom is doing that, Tom Widmer, so he has all the facts and he's home recuperating from a knee replacement. Uh, so I, I don't know how to really answer it yet. We will debate it and we will talk about it and we will discuss the results of what the community thinks about leasing the space or renting the space. I don't know all the ins and outs of it yet. I have a lot of questions for myself. You know, this is a, this is a mighty light colored carpet. To have food and wine or, you know, even orange or grape punch in here. So I don't know. But there are a lot of questions to be asked and, uh, and Tom, as we move along, you will surely be informed of those. Okay? Who else? Kitty?
I don't believe I'd want to say what I feel yet. I answered the survey, but I don't want to announce it to make other people. Now I don't want to sway anybody one way or the other till the survey's in.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Who else? Anyone else? Don't be shy. If no one else has anything, we'll. Okay, Mary, come on up.
Everybody needs more comments and entertainment, but this might be something, uh, in regard to, uh, Don's point about private versus to have, uh, Susan Rash, our lawyer, look into that. And that would be your first step to see whether is government interfering with private enterprise. And it's strange how this things come back from your past, but back in the 1970s, my mother was a national flower judge in Abbeyville, South Carolina. And there was a lake being flooded in South Carolina, Lake Russell was being flooded. My father was in the soil water conservation service. So mother decided that it would be a great idea for the topsoil that was to be flooded to be placed on the property of government buildings. A no brainer, you would think. The answer came back that that was illegal because you had a government enterprise competing with a private enterprise. So that was exactly Don's point. I said, oh, mother got it right way back when. So just have your, um, attorney take a look at it before spending a great deal of time going down an avenue that might not be feasible. Simple. Good question. I will tell you what happened. My mother called up her U S representatives in Senate and her garden club colleagues did too. And they got a law passed in the U S Congress for the topsoil to be placed on the government properties. There you go.
Good for them. Who else? Anyone? Any concerns, anything you want the commissioners to know, or any questions you want to ask us that we might be able to answer?
I'm Arrington Cox. What are the liability issues in doing this? I think it's a great idea. Great use of the space. Um, bring in revenue. That is, is it wonderful area to do this, but what are the liability issues here? Ah. Huh?
Once the survey comes in, she's, he's talking to me. Once the survey comes in, we'll know what the public thinks about it. And if, if it's favorable, then we'll move on and ask those questions with our attorney. You know, what are the liabilities issues? Uh, is there going to be a cleanup fee, uh, for the room? You know, who pays to get this light colored carpet cleaned? If there's a spill and if there's food involved and, and is alcohol going to be allowed? There are a lot of questions to ask before we can move forward. So this is just the beginning. This is just pushing the plate forward a little bit. And, uh, we'll just have to see, but we, we will, we will ask for that with liability issues on. Cause there are some, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Tom said that the survey will be closed out next week.
Bill, you can bring the chair up here with you if you want to.
Hello? Is this loud enough? I'm Bill McCaskill. I live at 114 John Knox Road. I am interested in something safety wise. And I just want to make a suggestion that you may want to consider at some point in time. There are numerous times where I have driven, and I suspect every one of you have too, around a curve that you can't see, and all of a sudden here comes an approaching car. And you're trying to, the road is kind of tight and you have to really avoid the person coming at you. And what I was thinking in terms of was where there are curves, and I'm talking about tight curves throughout Monterey. Put some yellow lines right down the middle around the curve, not the straight part or the very slight curves, but those that are more or less blind is from each side, a driver comes into it and then all of a sudden they're confronted with a car. But to me that would be a, something that would help the safety of the road and people moving around. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Just a suggestion.
We'll get with, uh, Chief and, uh, and with Barry and look at being able to do that. Tom, you coming up again or you just being polite? Anyone else? Mike?
Hey, Mike Colley, 344 Oklahoma Road. Uh, on that comment, I would just add that I think it's a great idea for the, the stripe, the stripes particularly in the curves. Um, but also maybe the town could use its right of way along the side of the roads around those blind curves to cut some road dead or, or trees or whatever, just so it's more visible. I can, I have had hundreds of those incidents on Lookout Road. Thank you.
And they fly up lookout sometime, don't they?
I think Barry can answer this when he comes in, but I believe the road has to be so wide to put a yellow strip down though. And I know up Virginia Road for me, there's a curve just like you're talking about. But, um, you couldn't put a stripe there because nobody could fit on the other side of it. It's, it's pretty much one way. I mean, one lane. So I think there are some restrictions about putting yellow lines down.
You're specifically concerned about John Knox, I assume. Okay. Right up near your house. Yeah, understand. Yeah. Anyone else? Nobody jumping up? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until seven o'clock when we start our regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Otto. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes carry.
Want to say a few words about, I did this in the other meeting. I want to say a few words about Shannon Ingersoll. We've lost Shannon this last Friday after a long, long illness. She served the town well. She served on the Board of Adjustment from 2015 to 2018. Was also a member of the Bridge Aesthetics Committee. Shannon always had interesting questions and an interesting insight into whatever was being discussed and we certainly miss Shannon. So our thoughts and prayers are with Wink. Also had a, I have asked, been asked to repeat it. Some people missed the, the public forum session. But Martha Campbell submitted some, some questions to be asked and, and what was the, one of them was what was the town's total expense for the matter for the lodge lawsuit? Through December the 31st, 22. And we've spent eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents in attorney fees. Fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars in staff time and fees. For a total of a hundred and one, nine hundred and thirty thousand, sixty-three dollars. That's your tax dollars, my tax dollars. Average current monthly expense of this litigation is right at less than five hundred dollars a month, but it's been going on for two years. So the, the further it goes, the less it's going to be per month, but that doesn't keep the total from being less. Another question was where's the current budget? Where in the current budget does the extra money for this and other litigation come from? The town, when they do, when we do a budget, we talk to our attorneys and find out what the anticipated fees are going to be for lawsuits of this nature. And you just take it away from other items. We could have bought Chief three new police cars fully equipped with a hundred and one thousand dollars. Could have bought Berry a brand new backhoe or perhaps a new bucket truck. So all that went for attorney fees instead of to stuff we needed for the town. What decisions have staff and council made to provide for current and future costs of this lawsuit? Same thing. We'll just have to look at, at the, the coming year and what the attorneys feel like the, the litigation's going to be concerning that suit and budget accordingly. And, and how will the financial updates be made about this litigation, litigation to the town? It's all public record. It's the only way I can even speak to it. We have a policy with the town that we don't speak to ongoing lawsuits. So I'm not speaking to an ongoing lawsuit. I'm answering questions that are public record to Martha Campbell. And I did that in the regular session. We'll move on now. That was my communication for tonight. Consent agenda. January, the 12th Town Council Public Forum Minutes. And also the January 12th Town Council Meeting Minutes were approved when we adopted the agenda. The Town Manager's Communication, Ben.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners and residents of the town of Montree. I would like to formally introduce the town's newest employee, Ms. Rachel Eddings. Please stand up. She is our Finance Director. She officially began her job February the 2nd. And she's hit the ground running and she's doing a marvelous job so far. And she really came in back, I guess it's been about two and a half, three months ago. And worked in a part-time capacity for the town in the Finance Department. And we want to welcome her officially to the town of Montree. And I know she'll do a great job, not only for this organization, the town of Montree, but for each and every one of you citizens. Residents and visitors to our town. Thank you, Rachel, for being a part of a great thing.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks, Rachel, for being here. Rachel bailed us out right away when we got a notice that we were behind on our Powell Bill report. And in talking to Darlene, she said, if you've never done a Powell Bill report, it's unusual to get it right the first time. Between Angie and Rachel and who else? Darlene and Debbie, they got it right the first time. Thank goodness. Thank y'all. Okay, administrative reports, Commissioners, you have received the administrative report, the planning and zoning report, police, public works and water report. Sanitation, streets and finance. Are there any questions or comments on any of those?
I have a comment and it's just a, it's, it's, it's sort of a new year item. But, but all of the columns in these reports are labeled 2021 and 2022. It's now 2023. So they need to be relabeled 2022 and 2023. And then in various reports, frankly, the, the numbers aren't correct. I'm, I'm not sure because the, the numbers in the columns were wrong. They were placed in the reports incorrectly. For example, it lists that last year's building permits in, in January were six. But they were actually seven if I looked at the minutes from last year. So I mean, I'm looking at last year's reports and issues reports and they're not matching up. So because the dates didn't get right in the columns, there was, there was some, there was some confusion in the way the reports. Bring that to your kids. Okay.
Anyone else?
Very, you've been here. I meant to ask you this earlier, but where are we on the upper Tex, Texas area as far as repairs? Where does that?
I actually have a phone call in to CDC. I'm awaiting a response on them for both repairs.
Okay.
I'm in limbo on it right now.
Okay, very good.
Okay, we've time to open the floor for public comment. Floor's open. Martha.
Thank you. I'm Martha Campbell, 149 Maryland Place. Recently I read an article in the newspaper. It was in the Black Mountain and the Asheville Papers. Brief filed in Superior Court against MRA in the town of Montree. I'm sure you all are familiar with this article. As I read the article and some of the details in it about the brief, I became more and more concerned that it's going to be difficult for this town to fill its volunteer positions on boards and groups within the town. If with full-time residents, if their contributions to entities in this town are being published in the paper. Personally, nobody asked me when I went on the council or have gone on any of the boards, how much money I've given to the college, the conference center, the Heritage Center, my church, any of that. But in this article, it is published, doesn't have the name for which person, but it's published with what their contributions were since 1997. Now during, that's a long time. And during that time, there had been capital campaigns, this was to the conference center. Capital campaigns and all kinds of reasons that people had opportunities, they had to contribute. I think it's unfortunate and I hope that we don't come to the point where the application form that the town gives to persons who are willing to give some of their volunteer time as public servants have to tell where they contribute their money. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anyone else? Seeing no one pop up, we'll move on to new business, since there is no old business tonight. Oh, consideration of wayfinding sign request from MRA. Kayla, is this you? Okay.
All right. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Kayla DeCristina and I am the zoning administrator for the town of Montree. Before you tonight is a request from the Mountain Retreat Association for permission to place a new wayfinding sign in the right-of-way of Assembly Drive between Community Center Circle and Lookout Road. The new wayfinding sign would replace the existing wayfinding sign in this same location. Next slide, please. So the existing wayfinding sign is considered non-conforming because it was installed before the Montree zoning ordinance was enacted. And the existing wayfinding sign is proposed to be removed and replaced with a new sign. The new sign has to comply with the zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. So the existing sign and the location of the proposed sign is located at the yellow star on the screen before you. There's also images of what the current sign looks like today. Next slide, please. So the Montree zoning ordinance states that no wayfinding sign other than government agency-owned wayfinding signs may be placed in the town's rights of way without obtaining permission and approval from the town. Just so, just to note, wayfinding signs are defined in the ordinance as signs designed and intended to help direct a person from point to point or confirm a person's progress on a route. Next slide, please. All right. So to obtain approval for this new wayfinding sign to, and to conform to the Montree zoning ordinance, the applicant has to obtain permission from the Board of Commissioners to place the sign in the right-of-way. And again, it's in the location that the existing sign is in. And the applicant also has to get a variance from the Board of Adjustment to allow the wayfinding sign to exceed the size restriction that's listed in the ordinance. But again, the Board of Commissioners is only being asked to give permission to put the sign in the right-of-way. I just wanted to note there was another piece to this. Next slide, please. This sign, excuse me, this screen before you shows the renderings of the proposed sign from the two approaches that it will be visible from. So from Lookout Road and from the gate. Next slide, please. So for the applicant to get permission to construct the sign, they have to get permission from the Board of Commissioners to put the proposed sign in its proposed location. I do request that should the Board of Commissioners give their permission for the sign location, the permission is granted on the condition that the applicant obtains a variance for the size of the proposed sign. And the board should also consider conditioning their approval on the applicant returning to the board for new permission and approval. Should the design or size of the sign change from tonight into the future before it's actually approved, even if the change itself negates a need for a variance, if the proposed wayfinding sign still remains in the right-of-way. So if the design were to vary from what you see tonight, I would recommend y'all consider conditioning your approval on them returning should the design change. That's what I forgot for y'all. Do you have any questions?
Do you have anything to say?
Tanner Pickett, address is 102 Walker Street, Black Mountain. Yeah, you saw the, the, the sign that's currently there. I don't know that any of us really know. It's been a lot longer than I have. I know one of my staff really knows who put it up, but I think generally it's assumed it's, it's ours. And so to us, just there's a lot of wayfinding features we could add there and I don't think it does a really good job of showing representing this community. So we thought, why not take a stab at making it look better? We would move it outside of the right-of-way if we could, but if you go any further, you're going to be in the creek. So that it was either leave it there, take it down or come up with something. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Tanner or Kayla. Just, just for the record, the removal of the sign, the building, the materials, the replacement of the sign, who bears all the cost?
Well, the MRA will in conjunction with the college. We, I worked with the college for the design, so they, their staff has had input. And we updated the logo and the colors and all that kind of stuff as well. So we'll share that, share the cost of the variance as well as the, the the sign. The, the variance will cost a lot more than the, the permit will cost a lot more than the sign itself.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc. All right, Commissioners, you have a proposed motion in front of you. Do I hear a motion?
I moved to our grant a request from the Mountain Retreat Association to place a way, a, a new wayfinding sign in the town of Montree. Montree is right-of-way for Assembly Drive between Community Center Circle and Lookout Road.
Have a motion. Commissioner Otto, have a second.
Can we add what?
Yeah, I was going to ask Ken if he would amend this motion to add what Kayla suggested.
If anything changes from what we've seen tonight, have to go get a variance.
With, with the addition of any changes to what has been presented, if they are made, they need to come back before the board.
Okay, have a motion. Have a second. Okay, a motion, have a second. Discussion. Comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Eyes carrying. Item two on the agenda. Thanks, Kayla. Thanks, Tanner. Consideration of a resolution supporting local control of school calendars. Angela, are you going to do that?
Yes, sir. The new superintendent, Dr. Jackson, who is here with us, I believe in December, called me asking for your support for local control of school calendars. Two thousand and four, the North Carolina General Assembly set a statewide mandatory start and end date for all school districts. Only public schools, charter schools and private schools are excluded. What this, what this says is there's a lot of issues around testing with the, with the start date and the end date of the semester. They come back after Christmas, they take their exams. Some of them forget what they learned. Some of them selectively forget what they learn. So this will actually help a lot of issues like advanced placement testing, attending college classes, the testing, sports activities. I think football starts a little earlier than the classes do. So they're just asking for your support if that's something you're interested in.
Asking for support. Of course, we, we have to change our schedule up here because of snow, more so than the people in the eastern part of the state. So it's, it stands to reason that we control our, our local government controls our school calendar. Do you have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll move we adopt the resolution.
Have a motion to adopt the resolution from Mayor Pro Tim Blake. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from Commissioner Otto. Discussion. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Eyes carrying. Consideration of granting an easement regarding property on Harmony Lane. Krista. Kayla DeCrista.
All right. It could be worse. My aunt's name is Christine DeCristina. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not joking. Lovely woman. All right. So, good evening again. My name's Kayla DeCristina. I'm the zoning administrator for the town of Montree. Before you tonight is a request that you all first heard at your October 13th, 2022 meeting. This request is submitted by Gary Higgins for an easement to obtain access for a lot off Harmony Lane with PIN number zero seven one zero seven seven two zero two one zero 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 zero. Next slide, please. So the subject property of Mr. Higgins' inquiry is located on So, the subject property of Mr. Higgins' inquiry is located on the eastern side of Harmony Lane, east of Little Piney Branch, and it's outlined in red. This property does not have direct access to Harmony Lane or any road. Next slide, please. So, at the board's October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, the board recommended that Mr. Higgins pursue the option of obtaining an access easement to gain access to the subject property. The board requested that Mr. Higgins return to the board with the draft easement agreement, description of the easement, letter from the M R A for permission to cross the area containing Little Piney Branch and a title search confirming that the town of Montreat can grant this easement. So, staff received, staff being me, received all the requested documents, and I'm here and is also here representing Mr. Higgins to finalize this matter. So, as a note, Susan Taylor Ash, the town's council, and Commissioner Blake, Mayor Pro Tim Blake, both reviewed the draft easement agreement sent in the first board packet last week and the easement description and found them sufficient. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Blake suggested additional language be added to the easement agreement, and that language was included in the second memo sent to the board on the eighth, yesterday. Susan Taylor Ash agreed to add the proposed language into the easement. The only suggestion she made is that the applicant should consider in as another option instead of an owner's association doing a road maintenance agreement.
Right. I talked to her today, by the way, and she said she preferred the way we had it in the deed that we're associating.
Okay, perfect. So, the language that was in that memo on the eighth, that will be added into the easement agreement as it's written. Um, and then Mayor Pro Tim Blake also reviewed the title opinion and found that sufficient as well. Next slide, please. Yeah. Okay, so on the screen before you is the proposed access easement outlined in red. So, the easement area is thirty feet wide. It begins at the approximate midline of Harmony Road, Harmony Lane, changes from lane to road. It crosses Little Piney Branch, and then it ends at the subject property. Next slide, please. So, per the Montreat zoning ordinance, for any lot that does not abut a public street, no building structure or use of land shall be established until it has a legal easement connecting a lot with a public street. The easement must be a minimum of twelve feet wide, be physically passable for vehicular traffic, and be an easement of record and appurtenance to the lot for which it provides access. The easement agreement is subject to the approval by the Board of Commissioners. And so, the request before the board tonight is to grant or deny the easement as proposed or with revisions, subject to the conditions that are stated in the easement agreement. Do y'all have any questions for me?
I don't. This is the one we talked about about a couple of months ago, and I asked that you go back and get all this straightened out. And you've gotten all the documents and everything's okay?
Yeah, and, and Mayor Pro Tim Blake has generously donated a lot of his time to working through this to get the easement agreement where it needed to be, a description, same with Susan Taylor Ash. So, yeah, we, we have everything we need.
Okay, and that's his nature to be generous and thorough.
Definitely, definitely both.
Okay, do I have a motion then? Commissioners, are any questions?
And Matt Ashley is here representing Gary Higgins. If there are any questions that I can't answer.
I think we're good. Got a motion?
I'll move to, uh, grant an easement across Little Piney Branch to provide access to a lot to the east of Harmony Lane, described as PIN number zero seven one oh seven seven two oh two one five zeros.
Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Otto. Any discussion and or observations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes carry. Opposed? Okay, good. Consideration of parking plan on Lookout Road. Kent, is you?
It is. It's, uh, I guess it was maybe two, two months ago or either last month that you asked Commissioner Alexander and I to look into, uh, Lookout Road and the parking situation, um, traffic situation, safety situation, uh, kind of on that section. And so, to, to bring you up to speed as far as what we are considering here, I'm going to consider it from Assembly Drive when you turn right on Lookout. I'm going to call that lower Lookout up to Prodigal, and then from the Prodigal up to roughly Yale or Chapman, I will call that, I'm going to call that, uh, mid Lookout. So, that's sort of the section that we'll, we'll be looking at tonight. We had the Black Mountain Fire Department come join us. We had the Montreat Police that have weighed in on this. Obviously, Montreat College. We've had multiple meetings with them and, uh, many hours out on Lookout anywhere from nine A M. to four, five P M., just kind of looking at the traffic flow. Uh, we've had the Montreat, or excuse me, the Mountain Retreat Association, uh, Public Works. Um, some community members have weighed in, and obviously Commissioner Alexander, uh, prior to becoming ill, uh, has spent some time on this. Uh, all of that being said, as, as we know, and it's not a, it's not a seasonal deal, it's a year-round deal, parking is a premium in, in Montreat. And, uh, I, I would say, working with the college, working with the M R A, I certainly appreciated their insight. They were very upfront with, um, what their needs are, but they were also very compliant to say, you know, sa- safety first, and, and I appreciated their attitude and, and us trying to work with the fire department. I'm going to say a little bit of that, or a good portion of that stems, and certainly, uh, Chief Aaron, if, if you have anything, feel free to jump in if I, if I miss a statement here. But, um, so, so, so with that, what we're trying to do a- 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 as you come, we'll, we'll start from Assembly going up. That's not too bad of a, 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 we'll call a choke point, but we do have two, what I consider major crosswalks there, and, um, for bigger trucks, buses, fire trucks, and this is again where it stemmed from, and, and the fact that those two crosswalks have a, a middle crosswalk barrier in there, it's pretty difficult for these larger vehicles to, to get through and not swing over into the on- uh, oncoming traffic to, to exit Montreat. Um, so, so we've looked at that section, and then also the safety of people crossing because you, folks will park right up to a crosswalk, and that, uh, limits visibility. Um, do we have some slides, uh, available that might? Okay, so this, okay, this is a good portion here of lower. So, so this would be coming down Lookout, the first crosswalk you have there. Um, and, and I will, I will go ahead and tell you kind of what we're looking at as far as a proposal. But if you see that, uh, truck that looks like it's facing up, right above the crosswalk, and then just below, there's a blue car. We're looking at eliminating those two spots there. That will give more visibility. That will also give a bigger truck a little bit of room to, to flare out um, from that pedestrian sign that we've had multiple times, I think already this year with some car sideswipes, some mirrors knocked off or whatever. But again, a fire truck, and that is designed to, to be run, run over, which, that pedestrian sign, which, which is good. But again, just when they're coming through doing weekly checks or whatever, and, and again, any truck, a food truck, a bus, that's a little difficult. So, we're looking at uh, uh, again, eliminating those two spots. Uh, do we have another slide on lower? Lookout. Okay, so, this now, if you, I was sort of reversing your, your view. Now, we just turned off of Assembly. We're heading up Lookout. Just to the left there, you see that, uh, blue car. There's roughly three spots, and that's below the second one. Thank you. Uh, roughly three spots that are not officially designated, uh, parking spots, but they have sort of become parking spots. We are, because when you come through that crosswalk and that road curves there, that also, we feel like is, is somewhat of a dangerous spot for, for the fire trucks. So, that would be, we'll call it two to three more spots that we are looking to put no parking signs uh, on that section. And so, that would be the lower. So, roughly speaking, at this time, that would eliminate five spots down below, which again are premium, but yet we think from a safety standpoint is something that we, we should consider there. Uh, if you got a next slide, we'll jump up to upper or, or what I'll consider mid, uh, mid Lookout. So, this right here is perspective of looking up Lookout. The, uh, prodigal is just off to, to your right and back a little bit. Uh, this ha- ha- for, for multiple reasons, I probably, I'm going to say the, the fire department's one of their stickier spots. If, if you were to proceed up that road, uh, about eight, uh, five cars up to the left is where you turn into the Montreat, uh, college parking lot. If a fire truck is coming out of that parking lot, it roughly has no ability to turn right and or left when cars are parked there. Not only is that now creating a fire hazard, but that also because i- it goes all the way almost up to Yale is, is a real choke point for vehicles. If you've got a, uh, I'll, I'll call myself, I've got a Ford F-one fifty. If I'm on that road, it's just going to be me. Or, you know, there, there's, there's no room when, when students or neighbors will park there for there to be a two-way, uh, exchange. So, in this section, and again, this is with trying, and, and again, I appreciate the colleges, you know, support on this. We, we thought about a- a- and looked at the possibility of eliminating everything on that section. Uh, that would be a little difficult for, for multiple reasons. You'd have some homes there that do not have driveways and use that, and there's a handicap spot there. But we still had to address the issue of the fire trucks. So, that being said, as we are looking at it, and if you can tell, there's a white car, then four cars up is a, is a Mustang, and we are looking at from there, thank you, and those bushes roughly there going up, eliminating all parking from there. So, where that Mustang is parked, the white Mustang, black top, coming back, that would can still remain parking for college people, guests in the community, M R A, uh, residents. Going up, we would look to eliminate all of those spots, which is, which is roughly about ten spots on the upper. So, we're looking at, if you take that into consideration, that's five on lower and ten on the upper. Um, again, we think that will provide, uh, the needed safety up there. Uh, I, I was out. I, it, it's pretty amazing, even as tight as that is. Unfortunately, Lookout, I was out with Barry and Lookout, uh, just because it's, it's coming downhill, people tend to speak. I, I don't even know that they necessarily realize it, but, but again, Barry and I are literally standing almost in the middle of the road, and, and it was, you know, about blew Barry's cap off how fast it went by, and I'm like, you know. So, so I, I share that part and the fact that as we eliminate some of those parking up there, that's going to free that up, which will be nice for two-way traffic, but leaving these cars down here at the bottom, that will also create a little bit of a choke point and slash slow down because you're getting ready to come to a, a, a major intersection there anyway. So, I, I think from what we have seen, what we've looked at, talking with, again, the multiple departments and here and trying to find the best compromise, I, I would propose that if we eliminate those spots, that will be a good starting point to, to help clean up Lookout.
Okay, Commissioner Otto, thank you for your presentation. Questions from the Commissioners? Kitty, do you have any questions?
Um, I wondered if Dave wanted to weigh in on this.
Yes.
I see you scratching your. Oh, I took it as an intellectual and curiosity.
Just to jump in chronological order here, uh, when we first started talking about parking back in December, we were addressing an issue uh, on Appalachian Way in between Arkansas and Florida. Just wanted to let you know, sort of revisit that, uh, since y'all voted for erection of the signs, the rock placement, stuff like that, uh, that that has worked out very well. Um, your action on that has, has taken care of a, a problem there. Uh, fresh signage put up on Louisiana, excuse me, Missouri. Uh, and a little more focused attention on that street there has opened up that road as well, so we weren't seeing the congestion that we were seeing at the close of last year. Looking at what Commissioner Otto is, is referring to as, uh, middle, uh, Lookouts, um, I, I agree with that, especially when we look at, uh, the ability for the fire department to get in and out. Um, when they're going up in that area, if they respond to a call at McGregor Anderson Dorm or something like that, since those are technically commercial buildings, that's why they have to bring in the larger trucks, and they're, nine times out of ten, they're bringing in two, one, to address the issue initially. And the other one following on, uh, you'll see that stationed up near a fire hydrant because they do find an active working fire there. They go ahead and water coming through there. So, when those large trucks come in, they're either going to come up, uh, Missouri there, or they're going to come up Lookout and then cut back over to Missouri. So, with the elimination of those vehicles in that, uh, the photograph you just looked at, that's going to, that's going to make the fire department's life a lot easier as far as rendering the aid or assistance or whatever they need to do there. Uh, as far as facilitating two-way traffic, yeah, we've been looking at that for a while now. With all the vehicles parked through there, it makes that a de facto one-way, so we do need to open that up. Um, one suggestion I might make, I'm on board with everything, uh, as far as where to start that new no parking thing. In my opinion, I would bring that down just a hair to where we're seeing that driveway at three eighteen, I believe. Uh, just takes out a little, uh, ambiguous parking area there. Um, and then as far as the lower side, yeah, basically, we want to open up some area, uh, where those crosswalks on the lower Lookout portion. Uh, and it's not only fire trucks that have issues getting through there. Food service trucks, vendors, that sort of thing, and then just some larger vehicles in general, construction, dump trucks, that sort of thing. So, if we can open that up and make things safer for, uh, for pedestrians and all around the year, I, I think that's a plus.
Pedestrians entering those crosswalks too. It's blind to the driver. Black drivers cannot see those pedestrians when they're stepping between cars like that.
Absolutely. When you have vehicles on both sides of those painted stripes, they're essentially entering in traffic from behind cover, concealment.
Any questions of Dave or Alex or Kent?
I'll just add, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. The, the sidewalk ends, that was part of the reason we, we looked at that last two there. I also understand that the way that the topography is as well as the road, if you drop below the driveway, you've got a little bit more room over there, uh, for cars to, to get off of Lookout. So, so I, 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 I think that's a valid point. Part of my rationale there is, again, every parking place is a premium, and, you know, so, but, but, but I, I agree with that. And the last little caveat I will say is, is now, if, if we do enforce this as we did on Appalachian Way and such, you know, the, and, and I appreciate what y'all do, but, but we are adding more to your plate because this will take a, some, some, uh, tough enforcement there. I know the college will be willing to work with us. I know the M R A will be willing to, you know, a- a- as much as they can as far as help us with, with the signage aspect, but, but it really is going to fall on, on, on you guys to enforce this and, and, and get it cleaned up there for, certainly for the short term.
Well, we're certainly willing to step in. I mean, obviously, that's what we're here for. Uh, do want to point out the obvious, with the elimination of that parking, uh, that will be displacing vehicles, uh, to other spots, so we will be playing catch-up. Uh, maybe potentially on Texas Road or some, some surrounding areas, but we can do that in the future.
And I, and one, one, and with that comment, I know the college is working as we talk about that displacement, displacing them to the Black Mountain campus. So, we're, we're I, I understand, you know, that, that's, that's our dream and that's our goal.
Yeah, if we get back to the compliance and to, to going with, with a plan that was laid out, all the blue stickers and the freshman association parking down there and engaging in the shuttle bus. I floated the idea of even putting snacks on the vans and buses, something to entice the students into the ride program.
Any more questions from Commissioners on the parking plan?
I don't have a question for Dave, but he brought up something that I've been worried about, and that is displacing this many cars. Where are they going to go? I mean, it's hard to find a parking place in Montreat, and I think the college should be talking about talking about building a parking garage behind the library because there we can't create more parking and everything we do takes more parking away, and I don't know where these cars are gonna go.
They're talking about shuttling them, making them ride a shuttle.
He also said that freshmen aren't allowed to have cars on campus. Well, they have cars on campus.
No freshmen are allowed to bring their vehicle. In most colleges and universities, by understanding that freshmen are not allowed to bring their vehicles, uh, we talked about that in one of our meetings. There were, there was concern about that may hurt their recruitment process. Um, you know, so I I had to see that, see that was a valid point, I suppose. Um, the idea with their tiered parking, when you see the different colored stickers, the blue, the gold, the green, the gray, that sort of thing there. Uh, the gold can utilize the the existing parking up there, and the blues are supposed to be parking down advance and utilizing shuttle buses. The thing about that tiered parking system is it's the rules are set up, that's only in effect Monday through Friday, eight to five. So after business hours, on weekends, school breaks, you know, they're allowed to go everywhere and everywhere. Again, the uh their policy on when and where somebody can enter their parking uh spots, their parking areas, does not carry over to our town roads, you know, which is is fair game due to our roadside parking ordinances.
Thank you, Dave. Any more questions?
Well, I I know that Paul said freshmen aren't allowed to bring cars or to have cars on campus, but if I was a freshman, I just wouldn't register it.
And that's it. That's in fact what we're seeing, either not registering it or once they figure out which way the wind's blowing, simply removing their stickers and trying to blend in with residential parking.
Okay, do we have a motion on this? To adopt the uh move to approve the parking plan and lookout road?
I'd move to approve the parking plan and lookout on lookout road as uh as described by Commissioner Otto with three places or five places rather being removed on the lower lookout section and the other ten uh roughly roughly ten places uh on the uh south side of the upper lookout.
Have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Blake. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Otto. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes carry. Consideration of an ordinance revision for qualifications as a bear wise community. Mayor Pro Tim Blake. Only went through the gate at that speed.
Wow. Uh. Yes, uh. Uh, Arrington Cox is here, who's headed up our bear wise program here in Montreat that we started up in the fall and is continuing.
So much excitement.
Uh, it's part of all that process and and what our goal is to become a certified certified as a bear wise community in North Carolina. And we've been working with Ashley Hobbs with the North Carolina Department of Wildlife Wildlife Conservation or something. Um, yes. In any event, she's actually just the past week or two been named as the bear wise uh the head of bear wise program for all of North Carolina. Um, we met with her and and Barry also uh met with us uh uh to talk about solid waste because that's one of the uh issues that she had uh looking at our town ordinance, because that's one of the things that they look at in terms of certifying us uh communities in North Carolina as bear wise communities. And uh as a result of that, we have a number of of changes uh to the to our solid waste ordinance and one change to our um to our uh ordinance of prohibitive feeding of bears. The changes to the solid waste ordinance are mainly definitions. They're not really changes that affect the rules per se. Uh, Bearwise has uh bear containers and bear uh bear bear container plans that are certified to be bear resistant. They're bear containers that are certified to be bear resistant. And so we've added definitions in the ordinance for bear wise containers, bear wise, uh or or rather bear resistant enclosures, bear resistant containers, as well as a a a definition for our standard old trash cans. Um, the purpose of that is to to make following the rules clear. The rules haven't changed and and we need to communicate them clearly, but here's what they are. First, nobody in Montreat can put their trash out in just a bag. They have to bag their trash, but the bags have to be placed and at the very least a standard trash can or or solid waste container. If they put their, if they put their trash in a solid waste trash bags in a solid waste container, they cannot take them out to the street until the morning the trash is picked up unless they're put in a bear resistant container, uh such as the one that's just been built up here on Assembly Drive, uh such as the one uh Tom Widmer has at his house. For those of you've been over to Widmer's, a number of people have here. Those are bear bear resistant containers. Um, so that's the rules as they are, and that's the rules as they will stay. We haven't altered those. You've if you also have a bear resistant container yourself or bear resistant can, you can put your bags in a bear resistant can. They can go out before the morning of pickup. So uh the the rules haven't changed. You've got to put your garbage in bags. If you're just using a regular old garbage can, you you have to wait until the morning of pickup unless there's a a bear resistant container that you put them in or enclosure you put them in. Um, there, we are not requiring the the new rules does not require everybody to to buy a bear resistant garbage can. You don't have to have one. You don't have to take make that uh to to spend that money, but you do have to follow the rules. And if you just use a regular garbage can, unless you have a bear resistant enclosure, you can only put your garbage out the day of pickup. Um, so uh the only really new rule, and it's a rule that Barry has requested, and I think a very good rule, is the ordinance prior uh provided that town, if 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 trash got scattered uh around uh containers, of course, they were broken into by bears or whatever, that the town staff would pick them up unless they could prove that the people didn't make their containers bear proof. We've changed that rule. And the rule now is basically gonna read, if there's trash that's that is escaped from your trash barrels for whatever reason, um, the town staff will try to get there, but if they can't get to it and in the summertime, they're working until they're working more than eight hours a day, getting everybody's trash in and don't have the time to spend a lot of time cleaning up our mess. And so if they don't, if they can't clean up our mess, we clean up our mess. Simple as that. That's the only real change in the rule. There was one change in the rule dealing with prohibition of feeding of bears. Uh, that change was uh adding a a a provision which says if the Montreat police come up and catch you uh feeding, say, uh uh corn and ask you to uh and and notice that that's attracting bears and ask you to quit doing that, you can't, you can't say, well, I'm I'm feeding the possums or I'm feeding the raccoons. I'm not intentionally feeding bears. Uh, if they alert you to the fact that your practices are attracting enticing bears, uh you gotta stop. Now, that doesn't apply to bird feeders. They can't come tell you to take your bird feeder down. Uh, we 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 ask people to be careful with bird feeders, but uh this doesn't apply to bird feeders. Um, those are the only changes. Uh, it's been reviewed by uh Bearwise. It's been reviewed by uh the town staff. Uh, and uh we need to do a good job as part of the Bearwise program that Arrington's gonna be doing of publicizing these rules. Again, the rules really haven't changed and making sure everybody complies with the rules. Uh, uh, but that's it. And uh uh I I think it'll be a a a big improvement and uh we look forward to being a bear wise community soon.
Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance revision for the uh qualifications as a bear wise community?
I'll move to approve the ordinance revisions for qualifications as a bear wise community.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from Mayor Pro Tim McBlake. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes carry. Floor's open for public comment. Tom?
But uh I do have two comments about two separate, the two presentations. One is I'm real concerned about the property owners of lookout, not the M R A, not the college, for people who have depended on that for their parking, for their homes and for their visitors. And I just, I don't know how much they have been involved with this or an alternative that has been looked at for them. Maybe even helping make a a little indent into their property with a pavement or some parking place. Because that's a major thing up there. And I have friends who who have homes on lookout. And so I would encourage um the council to pay special attention to them because they don't have other alternatives. The second thing, uh a matter about, and I'm guilty of this. I I make uh uh and I think a lot of people do this from looking around the town. We differentiate between uh our garbage and our blue bag recyclables and our cardboard. And I'll put my garbage in the can for sure, but I'll leave my cardboard flattened out in some cans and stuff that, you know, outside the can. Is that permissible in this new uh situation? Uh, you can't respond, but but I I would like you to.
Mason will respond. Go ahead, Mason.
I believe, Tom, although I believe that the cardboard itself is not going to be considered solid solid waste within the definition of solid waste, which means it's uh it's not required to be bagged. Um, uh, so I don't, I don't think that you're gonna, these rules change anything to do with cardboard and non-solid waste. All of this is is simply on basically garbage. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Eric.
Mason, I just have one question. I'm sorry. Arrington Cox, two oh three Virginia Road. Um, I, Mason, I just have one question. I know that the owners are responsible for the trash, whatever, and letting the people who are renting know their responsibilities. And you just, you said that if the town has time to pick up the bear trash that's been scattered all over, whatever, Georgia Road, off going out there, whatever, by renters, the owner's not there to come clean it up. The town may not have time. So what what's the solution for that, Mason?
Good, good suggestion, Eric, and who's she's she's pitching me a softball because we talked about this.
Ah, well, I guess.
A big softball. Well, that's part of our education efforts and we're we the the fact is that the ordinance hasn't changed. Owners are responsible for compliance with the solid waste ordinance now, whether it's their tenants, whether it's their in-laws, whether it's their kids. Garbage is garbage. It's their garbage and they're responsible for. And what we need to do is work with uh work with the owners, make sure we communicate to them and also communicate to the uh to the management companies and make sure the management companies know that they've got a responsibility and they frequently do come by and and look after to that's one of the things they need to sort of help their owners enforce. One thing that we have now that we didn't have before, that I think will help help this situation greatly is twenty-four seven drop-off at 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 the convenience center right over there. And if we're get our owners to educate their tenants and guests, et cetera, about the availability of that process, I think that will uh really create a a much better situation. We won't have fifteen uh bags of garbage left out by the street uh on a Friday or a Saturday morning when people are leaving from the campus.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. I think my question is though, Mason, the owner's not there. The renters are there. They don't follow the rules. Trash is on the street. The bear gets in the trash. The town can't pick it up. Who cleans it up?
Arrington, we don't do questions and answers during a regular session. We do those during the forum. Okay?
I'd go sit down then.
Well, you we'll 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 thrash that out. We're going in your bear wise meetings and so forth. Okay? Anyone else? Mary?
Mary Standard, one eighteen Shenandoah. I really want to thank the council for all the work that they're doing on the parking issues and with the college. The good news is that the college admissions are going. The bad news is it's brought attendant parking problems and you're addressing those. And 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 ancillary to that are the costs to the town of increased traffic on our roads. It's been a while since Assembly Drive has been paved. That's gonna be coming up soon, I'm sure, and for lookout. And as you have your discussions with the college and with Dr. Mauer, um, during the November comprehensive planning portions that Dr. Mauer had for the college's plans, he indicated that the uh college does not make any sort of contribution to the town, call it payment in lieu of taxes or gifts or whatever term you wish to use. Nor when he was asked if they planned to do this as their comprehensive plan goes forward, he indicated that this was not part of the college's plan. And as I hear you speak tonight, we have a fair number of town resources. Doc, uh, there's just policemen, Aaron, our police, a lot of resources are going to college oriented things. So my wish and hope for the council as you enter into conversations with the college is that they somehow find a mechanism that they can contribute to the town for paving for uh other kind of activities that require town support and for parking issues as well. I won't begin to know how that would happen, but the college is a major player here in cost of town money, and I would like to see them participate responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Yes, Mike.
Hi, Mike Colley, three forty-four Oklahoma Road. Uh, because I drive on that what has become a one-way section of traffic on lookout road at least two, sometimes four times a day. I just want to thank the town for addressing that. Um, and for the concerns about, you know, where are these students going to park that have been parking on the road? Frequently, there are thirty to forty to fifty empty parking spaces in the uh parking lot behind the library. So there are still spaces for them to park. They just have to pay to park there. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you. My years at college, I don't remember anybody ever asked me if I was a freshman, a sophomore, a junior or senior. Whether I could have a car or not. I'd always take one off campus somewhere. All right, uh, anyone else? I think none. We'll move on to commissioners' communications.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, uh, thank you, Josh. Uh, wanted to advise the commission uh at a meeting uh that that Tristan Winkler of the uh French Broad Metropolitan Planning Organization in December called a a meeting.
French Broad Metropolitan Planning Organization in December called a, a meeting uh at the bridge for earlier this week, asked Tom Widmer and I to attend as well as Ben and Barry. Uh, and we had that meeting earlier this week. The purpose of the meeting was to see or to, to make some sort of assessment of whether the town would be in a position to accept the uh and be able to, to begin construction if we were to be given the federal funds that we've granted to uh complete the bridge later this year. As, as Tom, I think, reported in the December meeting that the Metropolitan Planning Organization is planning, currently planning on releasing funds to us. It's sort of a guinea pig with maybe one or two other projects several years early uh in, in terms of the lab plant funding. Uh, so we had the meeting. Tuesday, Wednesday. It's a good meeting, but they made two things uh clear. One, uh, our current plans, we're sort of stuck between a twelve, a twelve foot width that we have our original phase one plans that were done back five years ago in two thousand eight. Uh, and, and that called for a, a twelve feet width. And uh, but there has been some indication inside of or, 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 or s, 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 some of our plans for the overhead structure, if you talk about a twenty foot width bridge, not reducing us the width of the bridge, it's sort of a path of least resistance. First point they made is you got to decide what width you want. Second point is you've only got plans for a twelve foot wide bridge. We, with, without plans for the covering and aesthetic portion of the bridge, we need complete plans for the entire structure. Uh, and, and, and we, and so that's forces the decision. Sign on twelve feet, sign on twenty feet, whatever you want to do, but we need plans for the entire structure. I uh, based on the discussion, Tom, I, Ben and Barry had upon, on earlier in the week, uh, the Bridge Committee was meeting today and the Bridge uh Committee uh approved a resolution requesting and recommended uh to this town council that we authorize staff to negotiate a contract with Mattern and Craig to prepare the original uh phase one plans to design phase two of the bridge at either the twelve, either the twelve foot width provided for in the current plans of phase one, or if staff determines that it might be less expensive to build, to, to stay with the wider bridge uh to uh design it at a twenty foot width. And uh, uh, in any case, those funds for the plans that Mattern and Craig would cost to do the design, you pay for the funds we've got allocated this year in our budget for the bridge. We, 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 the, the bottom line is we can't proceed with this project unless it's, we got a complete design. And North Carolina DOT, which was there meeting with us as well as the uh, uh, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, they won't, they won't, they won't move it forward unless they've got plans for everything. So uh, it seems to me, uh, uh, clear to us, talking it over with Barry and, and Ben and Tom, that the twelve foot width probably is going to be the least expensive uh way to go. And so that's the direction we appoint staff in unless they find that somehow it's, it might be less expensive to stay with the existing plan. But I think it would be helpful if the commission tonight did approve uh directing staff to uh negotiate a contract with Mattern and Craig through their design work, would necessarily approve that, the contract tonight. We'll be able to take a look at the files next month, if we can get it in gear so that we can get this process started and still be on track, hopefully exceed the federal amount.
Mason, can you put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, uh, I, I move that uh the town council authorized staff to negotiate a contract with Mattern and Craig to design phase two of the bridge uh at twelve foot width, which coincides with the twelve foot width of the plans for phase one. Unless they determine it would be more cost efficient to engage, have a contract which engages Mattern and Craig to uh redesign both phases one and two in the twenty foot width. And that the funds for that be paid from uh our existing budgeted funds for the bridge and be brought back once it's negotiated to this council for approval.
I have a second. Then we'll have discussion, discussion. And Ben, am I okay doing this? It wasn't on the agenda. Can't, can't do a motion.
Technically, it's your meeting, so you can do whatever you'd like, but technically you should have amended the emotion, amended the agenda to add.
And, and when we started.
You can direct staff, but you can't really vote.
Okay. That's what you meant was to direct staff.
Yes, I, I, I meant uh that I wanted a consensus on directing staff.
Consensus on directing staff. Yeah.
That's correct.
I'm not voting, but you have my consent.
Kitty?
My consent.
You've got consent.
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 That's what we needed to hear and uh we'll have something to bring back at the next uh regular meeting of the board of commissioners.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners' communication?
Uh, just as a matter of interest, uh, Jane just texted me and said that emergency vehicle is between the library and the dorm, so timely.
Okay. Tell her she's supposed to be in the bed. Okay. No other? Entertained a motion to, to move to uh executive session or close session? For personnel matter?
Mr. Mayor, uh, move that we enter to a closed session in accordance with N C G S one four three dash three one eight point eleven parentheses six for discussion of personnel matter.
I have a second. I have a second from Commissioner Fouchet. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes carry. We'll move into a closed session. We'll go into the boardroom.